Call the May 12th, 2025 Delta Township Planning Commission meeting to order. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Secretary, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Dudley, a singer.
Kozetsky.
Kozetsky, thank you. Marietta.
Here.
Thank you. Myself present, Mark Mudry.
Present.
Uh, Mike Medway is absent.
Yes.
Bob McConnell is absent. Rachel Elsenga.
She's absent, thank you.
And Wendy Bradley.
Here.
Hello.
We have a quorum.
Okay.
And we have quorum plus one.
Okay, uh, Mr. McConnell. Ah.
Just what we needed here, we were dealing with this whole issue of rulings and. And the rule master shows up. Okay, uh, on to approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? It's been moved and supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, approval of minutes from April 14th, 2025. A copy was included in your packet. And more motion, motion and support. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Minutes are approved. There is no correspondence.
Yeah.
There is no old business. There is no public hearing. So we're on to other business, uh, which is a site review is the first item. So, Peter?
Yep, so, um, Dave's gonna walk us through the site plan tonight. If I can remind everybody, pull your microphone close. We've noticed in recent recordings, it's really hard to hear everybody. Um, again, if everybody remembers Sarah, if you don't, before, say, Anderton, she's our department assistant, so she does the minutes for us. And, um, it can be hard if you're soft spoken, it can be hard if you don't speak into the microphone, so thank you for that.
So before the planning commission tonight, we have a site plan review application PFSP 2025-05. Each Living Properties LLC, uh, application to construct two 40,000 square foot warehouse buildings and install a parking lot with 267 spaces for the storage of truck containers at a 19.82 acre parcel located in the southwest corner of Snow Road and Pearson Highway. So as indicated in the staff report, uh, this is a proposed phased project consisting of three phases. Phase one being the 267 space, uh, storage, outdoor storage lot for, uh, empty semi truck cars. Phase two will be the north, the phase two would be the northwest corner of this building. Proposed a 40,000 square foot spec building, uh, leasable general lay office space. Same thing with phase three, which is down here, um, at the southwest corner of the site. Um, the park, the the proposed buildings are, um, mere images, the parking lot is very similar. There's a little bit more parking in phase three, um, all of which meet the criteria. As noticed in the staff report, there were a couple, uh, things that this plan omitted. One was parking lot landscaping, so the zoning ordinance, it requires that parking lots and industrial sector that can be seen from the public right of way are required to be landscaped. So in this instance, it would only be the northern parking lot of phase two, which would meet that. Um, also a comment was that the sidewalk that's gonna be north of phase two building and south of phase three building, kind of their front faces. Because the sidewalk is adjacent to parking spaces, the ordinance requires that to be seven feet, and right now it's proposed at five feet. Um, the plan proposes a grease belt, which will be installed along the full face of Pearson Highway up to, uh, and then down on snow. Also, in the plan is going to be a berm right here. Uh, the specific, uh, requirements for outdoor stores require a mason area wooden fence around the parking lot. Uh, the applicant has been asked to provide detail of that, but they understand that, you know, that's the standard of fencing, uh, which is required, and the plan does show fencing, um, around the parking area. Uh, fire department and engineering department have not yet provided comments, but we're expecting them very soon. Uh, the road commission has provided comments regarding, um, uh, redesigning the current ingress egress point. Uh, I've noticed in the staff report, there's also a comment requiring that there's a cross access easement be created. Um, it's kind of, initially this parcel was part of Midwest Press, which is the existing building to the south. When it was split in 2015, the, uh, driveway, which is still in use, and it's just one of those things that was never officially recorded because now that there's a new property owner, uh, who's proposing a new development on that, we would like to get that codified and a little bit more, uh, regulated. Uh, it's my understanding that the applicant has, is agreeable to all the changes. They are here to answer any questions you may have about the project.
Oh, do you want to touch, touch on the phasing and the timing expiration?
Um, so phase one will, like I said, will, will be in the 267 space project. Uh, let's face two and phase three, the way the ordinance, um, stipulates approvals, it's two years from the final approval date when they give us a, you know, stamped copy, everyone's comments have been addressed. Two years from that date, they have the ability to hand in a site plan to the building department to continue on. They won't have to come back with the planning commission. The ordinance also allows for a one-year extension, um, by letter to the zoning administrator. So if they were to plan ahead and do that, they could possibly have, uh, three years to work this plan out and phased. If after that three-year clock, um, expires, they'd have to come back and present to the planning commission and basically start over.
Yep, so if that southernmost building hasn't, isn't under construction by the end of that period and passed the extension. Yep, so if that southernmost building hasn't, isn't under construction by the end of that period and pass the extension, they'll come back to this group for renewal of the approval, well, re, re, like Dave said, a re, reapplication. And then just to clarify the other point, you know, after, on the, on the heels of this process, we go, our process is, is kind of confusing, uh, you know, they had the planning commission approval of the site plan, and then it goes to essentially the zoning administrator. So the, they work with us and there's sometimes several back and forths between us and the engineering utilities department and the applicant kind of finalizing that plan, getting everything set, and then I'll, I, I write a separate letter that has a date, and then that becomes the, the date. So they get two years from that date. So that could be four months from now.
Commissioners, any questions?
Is this depicting an asphalt?
Correct.
Lot, basically?
Yeah.
Cause they're gonna park the trailers.
Correct.
And that'll produce a lot of water runoff. So has it been, has it been studied as to what?
Yeah, they, they have already submitted to the Eaton County Drain Office. Um, I think they have preliminary comments, I believe. Um, but it's, you know, within the realm of reason that they're gonna be able to handle the runoff appropriately.
So the drain commission will determine whether the downstream?
Correct. The drain commission has the full, um, overview, uh, of stormwater.
Okay. And our approval is contingent on their approval. We would, we do not issue a building permit until we have that in hand.
Okay.
Yeah, to their credit, it was one of the more thorough analyses of drainage and storage capacity and that sort of thing that I've seen. So typically those can be a little sketchy. Anything else from the? Anybody in the audience that would like to speak to? Uh, when you get to the podium, please state your name and address.
Sure, uh, Dan Lewis, uh, with VK Civil, so the civil engineering designer of this. Address is four six six four Campus Drive, Calm Zoo, Michigan. Uh, just to help with your approval this evening, um, we agree with all fifteen bullet points that's in, uh, the conditional approval. Um, to give you an update, we, um, submitted the plan to the road commission. They gave us one comment. We, uh, that drive needs a D cell and an XL lane. We have that designed, went back to them, and we're just waiting on their approval, but I see no issue. We met their comment. Same thing happened with the drain commissioner, so there is a pond in the center of the site and at the bottom below the building of phase three. That's where all the stormwater goes initially, and then there is an allowed discharge in the northwest corner of ours being there, uh, that was totally planned for this site. So we, um, submitted the plan, they submitted comments to us, we've addressed those comments and it's back to them, and we're waiting on approval there. And we don't see any issue with that approval. We addressed each of their, um, comments. Um, the one thing I would like to discuss this evening, and it's just from a spending community wealth, so he is here. Uh, he is the owner and developer. Um, the fence that's required on the north side of the parking east of the main drive where we're storing, um, you know, these delivery vehicles. Uh, so you can see it on the map there above you. It's, it's the line that has the squares with it, so line, square, line, square. So along the north side of that and along the east side of that, that fence is going to be on the parking lot side of a six foot berm. And I know your intent there, if there wasn't a berm there, like, yes, make us do the fence. But that fence is six foot tall, that berm is six foot tall. Um, just, you know, it's, it's fifteen to twenty grand for that fence and nobody's gonna see it. And, and I don't want to just be here to check boxes, you know, we wanna, you know, fee is from the area. Uh, you know, just community wealth, does that really make sense? That would be the only kind of pushback discussion we'd love to have with you. You're not gonna see that fence from the road. Um, we'd be happy to keep it in the corner there because, you know, we're not doing the berm in the corner because of the overhead lines. We'd be happy to keep it in the northwest, uh, just in case you can see the parking lot there till it hits the berm. And same in the southeast corner. Um, if I could have a pointer, I could do, you know, there's three spots where there might be a gap in the, happy to put fence in those spots, but the, the whole length of the fence, like, it's gonna be behind the six foot berm. I, I just don't know if that makes sense, community wealth wise of spending money on fence behind a six foot berm, you're not gonna see it. So that's one thing I'd love to discuss. If you need it and boom, we have to check the box, we gotta do it, okay, we'll do it. Cause we want, we would really like to walk out of here with an approval, but just, does it make sense? So David?
Uh, it's a specific, that's the only way to get relief from that would be, uh, zoning variance.
Okay.
This body cannot give you relief from that specific standard.
Okay.
Is that a variance that we can get after site plan approval?
You, you could request it. I would, I think the zoning bar of appeals will be hard pressed to granite. You can make the request and pay the fee and we can hold a public hearing.
You wouldn't probably have an answer until July, though.
Is the, is there any precedence for that berm next to, has it ever been approved for a variance? Just, you see the logic that we're talking there.
I, I don't understand what you mean by precedence, but.
Has, has a variance ever been given to not allow the fence?
I, I would doubt it. I would add, I mean, I would probably advocate the ZBA not to grant the variance. I haven't seen the plan yet, but.
It's a. Page eight.
That was a beautiful berm.
That sheet, C four oh one. And you're, you know, one of your bullet points this eve- evening is like, that's, that's the guarantee that you're getting a six foot berm from us. It's worthwhile just to talk about.
It's technical difficulties. I'm not sure exactly what happened. All the screens were black.
If you all have plans, it's on sheet C four oh one, or I can walk this around to you.
Yeah, this group isn't gonna be, so.
Then we are good with the bullet points as is, and would love to walk out of here with, with an approval. If you have any questions of me or fee, we are, we are here for those, so.
Commissioners, anybody else have a question for? Seeing none, anybody in the audience with any additional comments on this project? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of the commission?
A court.
Thank you.
Okay, I approve that the planning commission approved the site plan application from H Living Properties for the proposed plan consisting of a two hundred and sixty seven space outdoor storage lot and two forty thousand square feet with an accompanying one hundred and ninety two parking spaces located at twenty nine zero four Snow Road, which is parcel number zero four zero zero two six four zero 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 eight two zero zero, which is subject to and listed, there are fifteen.
That was, you said a number wrong. Sorry, you said a number wrong in that sequence of parcel numbers. Doesn't match what's on the agenda, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, if you can come.
That didn't match what's on the agenda. The second to the last number series, and the agenda says zero nine two, and I think you said zero eight two.
Yes, that's what's listed in our packet.
Yeah, they do.
So which one's correct?
Zero eight two or zero eight two?
Zero nine two is the correct.
Zero nine two is correct.
I don't really care. I just thought you guys would care. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I meant the record to reflect that.
Support for the motion.
Do we need to say anything like as presented to the commission on the state?
We, we don't typically.
We know there's things that are subject to change.
Yeah, the mo, the way the, we write the motions are, they, they refer to the plan that you see subject to the conditions, that some of those revisions, some of them aren't. Uh, that's my, my comfort level is, I'm good with, with that way.
Yeah, just think if we, if there's any situation where we'd have to revisit, that's, yeah, it doesn't sound like it.
Yeah, and just for cor, just for clarification, we don't need to amend the conditions to reflect the landscaping and the sidewalk width because those are already part of the
Well, they, and they're in there as specific conditions. Yeah.
Good, that's good.
Okay, we have a motion and support. All votes in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No, it's just a voice.
Yeah, let's, let's do a, let's do a no call vote.
No.
Then we do a voice vote for these motions.
Except for public hearings, is it?
This is not a public hearing.
Right, so we're good.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, just further touching all the bases, uh, one thing that we missed on the agenda, uh, we'll look back. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on an issue not already on the agenda? No. Okay, uh, the next item is twenty twenty five master plan update.
I'll take this one. So, um, I, I'm just gonna keep this on the agenda for the rest of the year until the master plan's updated. So, um, our team recently, so there are three members of this group that are part of the master plan steering committee. That meeting is this Wednesday at ten AM in that, that room across the hall. So, um, we'll, we'll see you there for that, and I'll send an email reminder out tomorrow morning about that. The only real action we've taken, and it's not an official action, we've reviewed a draft. So the members of the steering committee are gonna see a draft on existing conditions. So we've got about forty pages on existing conditions, and it's kind of the preamble to the, 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 the real, what I'm gonna call the, the meat of the, of the ordinance, which are gonna be recommendations and goals and objectives and that kind of thing. But right now, we're dealing with, um, it's really just a descriptive narrative of all the different things that are, and it's kind of a, like an, like a listing of community assets. So if you've ever read a master plan, the first forty pages are usually just kind of, uh, content about the community. So we'll have a lot more, there's a lot more to go on this. Uh, the staff reviewed this just for preliminary, but the steering committee will see it on Wednesday morning, and I'm sure you'll get some time after that to, to review and provide some comments back. But as of now, um, in, I think in June, or we'll start talking with the consultant about what the public out, public input, public outreach process looks like. There's a lot planned, but there's at this point no dates or, you know, anything associated with that. So we'll start to solidify that as a draft of the document starts to come together. So I'll just continue to keep you updated as we go.
Okay, any questions from commissioners on that?
Is the steering committee meeting open?
Um, it's potentially yes. I mean, it's not, it's not a closed meeting, so if you're, wanna attend, you're welcome to. I wouldn't, I wouldn't turn anyone away.
Okay. On to project updates.
All right, project updates, I'll tackle this one as well. I'm just gonna hit a couple things. Um, if you go to other meetings or I talk at, I, I usually hit the same ones. And a lot of this group probably already knows, but it's always good to spread the good news and have others that can also spread good news. So this is just kind of a encapsulation. I don't do like the manager read updates where he talks about more of the whole township stuff. I'm kind of focused on planning economic development stuff. We are, if you saw, Sultan's West is now open. So that's the former Z tune building. They're open. It's good. I've been there. Get over there. Um, there's a new cafe that's gonna open in Brookside Plaza over here. It's called The Willow. So that's the same shopping center with Ohana in it, um, and the Lego store and some other things. So this is a boutique cafe. She's gonna be opening in early summer. You'll hear more, a lot, a lot more about that coming soon here. The bathrooms and the greenhouse building at Horrocks are open now. So that's gonna supplement their, um, the activities that they have planned for the greenhouse this year. They still are planning to do significant renovations to their coffee sales area, expand the pizza restaurant that's in there, and then move around and expand the gelato. So lots of changes, like usual, at Horrocks are coming. Um, speaking of which, you know, Edo Chef was a longtime Thai food truck that was at Horrocks. They moved to Florida. L Oasis is there now, so L Oasis moved to their truck. I think the truck they had in Mason moved that up here. They've got, I don't know, four or five trucks. I live in Hassel, they've been in Hassel for, I don't know, eight years.
Yeah, we lost the, we lost the best pod Thai in three counties.
So, um, L Oasis is now stationed out in front of the beer, or well, the greenhouse, not beer garden, at, uh, Horrocks. Although we've also seen some applications from other food truck operators are gonna be many of them at Horrocks, but also some at other spots. So we've heard like Happy Bowl, Smoothies, Kona Ice, Smash Shack. You might see down in front of, um, twenty four hour fitness, close to Waverly. Smokin' Pig is the, uh, food truck of the eponymous restaurant here. Utterly Delicious is an ice cream truck that's actually run, I think, by one of the Delta Township firefighters. So you'll see those around. We're, we're in the licensing process right now. So those, and just for everyone here, those get inspected by the fire inspector and our electrical inspector. And that's to avoid catastrophe, essentially. A lot of the food trucks are, not all of them, but some of them are put together by, um, amateurs or enthusiasts. So there have been some very tragic disasters of that. So that's, that's the goal behind the regulations, more safety. Not just to monitor it, but more to be safe. Um, that's in lieu of kind of a statewide framework, so, uh, the state has talked about licensing them at the statewide, so locals wouldn't have to get into that. That's not set up yet, so we're still working on the local inspection model, and we really, our ordinance is modeled after what they do in Meriding Township and New Slancing. So it's really no different. The food truck operators in this area are generally looking at the same kind of standards everywhere they go. Jiffy Lube, um, should have gotten their certificate occupancy this afternoon, so that's the new oil change place on West Saginaw. Then the, kind of the furthest quarter away from here. Um, I think it looks pretty good for an oil change place, and it's a brick, bu, building. Um, so they're gonna be open here. McLaren continues to work away. They still want to be open by this fall. So, um, if you get a chance to go on their website, they've got a construction cam. It's twenty four seven, a webcam. They actually broadcast. So I looked at it from my house one, late, late one day, you know, it was dark, not that much going on. But it's all, it's twenty four seven, so check that out. Best Buy is getting closer to finishing up here at Delta Crossings, over here, Adult's Crossings. So that would be the movement of that Best Buy over to this space, much smaller footprint. Tailgaters is under construction down on South Kreitz Road by Lansing Road by the M dot facility down that way. So there's, I think, three or four other tailgaters in the area. Basically a very big convenience store, the gas station, this one would have, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, or it's just called Dunkin' now in, in there as well with the drive through. Delta Crosses, we still have Bass Pro Shops on, um, in our site plan process, so we're still waiting for a couple things. The two primary things are the conversion of Marketplace Boulevard from private to public, that still has not been dedicated to the county. And the conversion of all the utilities. As of now, it's still, there are still, the utilities are still in private names. Those all need to happen, um, to be on, with the, in public, so we're working on that, um, and hope to get them off to the races to break ground on Bass Pro Shop soon, and I'll let you know when that happens. The Easy Mart Shell Station, just a hand, a throwaway over here is gonna be demolished or rebuilt. You saw that project as a special land use permit. They made it through our site plan process or on the, on the last steps of it. And so they'll scrape that site and rebuild it with a much bigger convenience store, and, uh, I think a couple more pumps. Talked about this other stuff, um. Oh, the board did adopt the short term, um, rental regulations. I believe I mentioned it at a previous meeting. So that regulates short term rentals. It does not prohibit them or limit the number or anything like that. It really gives the township some teeth, mostly to revoke licenses, so it, um, and one of the challenges, and I'll, I'll, I'll be active of this, uh, one of the challenges of the current ordinance that we've got right now, it just rely, it really just uses the basic rental registration ordinance for something like a short term rental where, um, you really cannot revoke a rental license unless there's something code related. Because there's people that live there, you don't want to displace people. So what this does is gives us a revocation, um, some teeth to the revocation clause that, um, if we have bad operators in the township for specifically to short term rentals, that we could revoke a, a rental license for purposes outside of code related. So hopefully that never happens and we, it's just there for safeguard, but if we ever find ourselves in a position, um, like um, like we had with the short term rental that was on Wardell, we'll have some options. So that's all I've got, nothing else, any questions?
Yeah. On Wayfully, the building in the long dramatic parking lot, has anything started with that, whether you were gonna turn that into apartments?
Oh, um, not, yes, but not immediately. Um, so we had them, so they got the expert, the extension from the, that was here at the last meeting, right, the, um, no, that was at the board meeting, I'm sorry. They got the, like Dave talked about, the extension for site plan, there's an extension for special land use permit, except it takes township board approval. So they got one more year for, under, under their special land use permit, and that was for the childcare center. And they are still working on financing, I mean, I think the owner would tell you if she was here, that they're working on how are they gonna get this thing built? Um, so that's, there's a lot of doors to knock on in that, and they're working with LEAP and some other, I mean, D C and some other groups to try to get that off the ground. And then they will be at the zoning board of appeals in this room tomorrow night to get a one year extension on their, they got a variance for a couple of different dimensional items with their site plan. So that's still very much in the works, but it's just been a slow process to try to get the funding lined up for it. But still active, still, still, still working on it.
Okay, is there anyone's interest in going into the uh, old, to be old Best Buy?
I have been, yeah, I have been talking to the owner, no prospects specifically. They are aware that there, there's a pending vacancy, um, and are looking to fill it, have talked to a bunch of people. It's a big building, is, I think, one of the challenges. So I don't know yet what the future of that site would, will be right now, I don't, they don't have anybody lined up in the short term. But I've been in touch with the owner. He's looking for, he's looking for people, if you got anybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Are we fully? We have full confirmation?
No, we do not have a full compliment, so um, we did an interview with, we have, there's one vacancy on the planning commission. Um, Supervisor Brewer has initiated a new process, which is going smoothly so far with, that we're she, she and a couple board members along with the staff, and there's, most of the boards and commissions I'm, I'm staffed to in one way or another. Um, so we inter, we'll interview applicants for those um, every month. And then she will decide, she with consultation with the other board members, will decide who goes forward to be recommended for consideration at the board level. So um, she is planning on recommending someone for consideration at next Monday's planning commission meeting. I'll just wait until the pack comes out and you can see who that is.
You have one last opportunity for public comment? Okay, seeing none, any further comments?
Nothing um, now, David, we lined up for meeting on the ninth, or uh, the first meeting until the ninth of June.
Yeah, we'll have a special land use permit for that meeting.
Okay, is that the car dealer, the vehicle repair shop? So for June nine, we will have a, we are, have a meeting. Uh, we don't have anything lined up right now, as of, as of now for May twenty sixth. So we likely would cancel that meeting, but we would have a meeting on the ninth, that will be a public hearing for we kind of discovered after the fact that there's a car repair business operating out of the back of the shopping center there at the southeast corner of Elmwood and West Saginaw. So there's like Wayback Burger and Firestone and some other ones in that shop. So in the back, there's a non, a door without any sign that is a, there's a the car deal repair shop operating out of there, so our team's been in touch with those guys, and we're trying to get them, get them organized and get their application up in front of, uh, it'll come here, it'll go to the board, so that process will start in June.
Thank you. Any comments from commissioners, comments, questions?
Move with judgment.
All in favor? Adjourned.
Uh, six thirty two, thank you.